Welcome to the East Hampton Public School Committee Meeting for December 11th, 2012. We will start with some announcements and I need to make the announcement first and right away that the meeting is being recorded. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Public Access Cable. Superintendent Falsby?
Okay, thank you Peter. The next school committee meetings are January 8th and January 22nd, 2013. There is no school December 24th through January 1st due to winter break. School reopen on Wednesday, January 2nd, 2013. And I have one other announcement that I'd like to add to the list of announcements tonight, and that is that we are very grateful to have received some furniture from the East Hampton Savings Bank. The furniture they aren't going to use any longer. They've been willing to give us a couple of desks that we're going to use in some of the offices upstairs. So, we will put it in our list of gifts next time for your official approval, but that's what's part of what's standing against the wall over there. So, we were very pleased to receive that.
Good, let's check the drawers for old money.
Yes, that would be nice, huh?
As always, the school committee appreciates, as I think all the committees in East Hampton do, the effort that's made by East Hampton Public Access Cable Stations to bring the meetings of government bodies in the city into the homes of people who either cannot attend or would like to review what is discussed. Tim and Kathy do a great job. They're always looking for volunteers to help out, and if anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, you can call Kathy at 413-203-1360. We have some good correspondence, don't we?
We have, yes, a letter from a student who is praising the drama and band departments at our high school. Wrote a fabulous letter about Mr. Wayne Levich, the high school music teacher, and Mr. Lennon, the Whitebrook middle teacher, and Ms. Davis at the high school who's teaching theater. And he had really fabulous things to say about all three of them. It's really good to hear that, particularly from a student.
I was so pleased to receive that email, and I wrote back to him and I asked him if he would be okay with me sharing it with you as school committee, and he said he would be honored to have it shared. So, I just thought it was such a beautiful letter and spoke so highly of our faculty here at East Hampton that I wanted it to be shared with everyone.
Nancy, was it shared with those faculty members?
You know, I don't know if it was or not. We'll have to ask-
Has been now.
-Principal Perron. I did share it with Principal Perron, and I'm not sure if it got there or not, but at any rate, if it hasn't, we'll make sure it does.
Okay, good.
Terrific.
Should we read it tonight? Should we read it? Want me to read it?
You want to read it?
Sure.
Okay.
Ms. Falsby, my name is Connor Gibbs, and I'm a senior at East Hampton High School. As a highly involved participant in the Fine Arts Department and current president of our drama club, I wanted to share some positive remarks about the faculty of the Fine Arts Departments in our school system. I feel that often our schools departments and the people responsible for their successes deserve more frequent positive acknowledgement. Most recently, the high school has employed Jane, oh, excuse me, John Wayne Levich as the new music teacher, and he's already had the choir begin challenging pieces that show the most advancement from a two-member choir dating back six-plus years. His work with the band also shows that program, that the program will continue to build strongly as it has been unified for a greater length of time than many local ensembles, including the school's choir. He has also assisted me to a point that I have received a recommendation for the Massachusetts Music Educators Association All-State Festival Choir. His credentials from a very rich music background show a promising view of the future of the high school's ensembles, as well as other students who are inspired by his elective courses. In addition, Whitebrook has most recently filled in former high school teacher Patrick Lennon as the band director, and I do hope that the school committee and staff of Whitebrook can appreciate this choice. Before I came to the high school, I had never sung once. It was with Mr. Lennon's involvement as the choir director that brought me to discover and sharpen the talent that I, has now translated into an aspiration to be a musical theater major. I credit Mr. Lennon as the driving inspiration to become a better vocalist, and if an opportunity to enter an ensemble based off of our entire state does not show his teaching abilities and success as a musician, as well as many others who have prospered from his teaching, then I simply do not know what does. Mr. Lennon is without a doubt a fantastic musician and will easily improve the band program at Whitebrook within the next few months and years. And although she is not a musician, Amy Davis from the high school has proven to be an excellent theater teacher, having taught me many tricks to be theatrical craft, or to my theatrical craft, as well as leaving me with questions to ponder. She's not a full-time employee, however, she has the drive to shape students into performers, if not at least their minds into something more appreciative of their performing arts as she were employed full-time. She's currently working with the chief members of her drama club in order to create new and energized events for our theater in our community. Projected for spring, Ms. Davis is leading our school to host a first-ever acting competition and an award ceremony for all the plays and musicals of schools throughout our county and those neighboring to truly unify the theater departments of multiple schools and appreciate the wonders of seeing life through a character's shoes. Most students in high school take for granted the staff with which they work and inspirations and opportunities that those staff members present. John Wayne Levich, Patrick Lennon, and Amy Davis have proven to be strong assets to the Fine Arts of East Hampton, and I hope that you will help me deliver these comments along with the most appropriate avenues so that the school staff, the school committee, and our community may be aware of the growing success of our Fine Arts Department. All three of these faculty members have made a difference in my life, and I can happily say that I am not the only one. Sincerely, Connor Gibbs.
Thank you Nancy.
I think we have an example of Amy's work standing behind us, looking over our shoulder. And I know that many folks have had their children, I think some of us on the school committee had their children educated by the folks who mentioned this letter. I certainly would agree with Mr. Gibbs in expressing that great appreciation for the work that they do. It's terrific.
Not to steal Bailey's thunder, but the music show is on Thursday at 6:30. I think, starting with the Whitebrook Band and finishing with the high school band and chorus.
It's a great event of organizational structure too, because we get a lot of people in and out of that facility to hear all the various student artists perform.
Always a great show.
It is, it's terrific. Thank you very much. We have gifts. Thankfully, we have gifts. Can I get a motion?
Vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation. East Hampton Savings Bank for the donation of $1,050 to the East Hampton High School Eagle Newspaper. Carol McClellan for the donation of Music Bear to Whitebrook Middle School. Louise Fleming for the donation of a piano to Whitebrook Middle School in memory of her sister Esther Mesh.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept with gratitude and appreciation, gifts from East Hampton Savings Bank, Carol McClellan and Louise Fleming. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We now come to the time in our meetings where it's open for anyone who would like to speak, perhaps in advance of an item on the agenda or an item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone tonight who'd like to speak? I thought I might be getting a signal from the back of the room there. Okay. Then I'll just make a brief announcement now that I think will begin to take up under matters for action this evening. We're certainly at our January 8th meeting, which is, we need to make the plan for the election of the new chair of the school committee. As you know, this is the last meeting that I will serve as the chair, so we can do that this evening if folks want to make a nomination, or we can have that discussion and vote occur in the January meeting. So, we will return to that under matters for action unless anyone has a question or a comment. No. Okay, thank you. Let's go to matters for discussion then.
So, committee does not have a report.
Okay, you guys are good. Read. Falsby?
Policy does not have a report, but we will be scheduling a meeting in January.
Okay, it's the Collaborative for Educational Services.
It is, and we only meet about quarterly, so there's been no, no meeting.
Okay, but they're still doing great things in support of education in the Valley, so thank you. You're on Bailey.
Okay. The chorus and band concert is this Thursday at 6:30 at Whitebrook. The Key Club is doing their Create a Dream project right now where we go out and we shop for families. So, I actually just got back from doing that. That was a lot of fun. And we are still selling Christmas trees on the weekends down at the Rotary. And, Sam, I forget, what else?
Most recently, actually last Saturday, two of our students-
Sam, sorry to interrupt. Would you mind coming to the podium, because your voice may not project onto the audio for folks at home?
Thank you, Sam.
Hi, I'm Samantha Brand, fellow student representative. And another brief announcement, on Saturday, actually, two of our students, Sarah Sankowitz and Lachlan Sernack Mitchell, held a candlelight walk to raise money for the Katrina victims. So, that was something really great. I wasn't able to personally attend, but I heard that it was a great success, and they were pleased with their work, so students doing great things. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask you both, could one of you elaborate on? I was so impressed when I learned about some of the details behind the Key Club project and what you're doing for those families. I was amazed at the amount of things that you were doing for this cause. Could you explain that a little bit more, like how many kids you're serving, how many families, and how much money you raised that you're utilizing to provide these gifts?
Yes, I'm not sure exactly how much money you raised. I know that we are, have been allotted to spend about $60 per child. We have a tax exemption form where like we go to Walmart and we buy Christmas gifts, whether it's toys or clothes or whatever. We're given the gender of the child, the age of the child, and like a t-shirt size or pant size or something to go along with, and then we just shop from there based on what we think their interests would be.
I thought that was really impressive, excellent.
Wonderful.
And my understanding is it was several thousand dollars that you had raised that they're using to buy all these gifts for children, and I just thought that was so impressive. Thank you.
Great service.
And also, this past Saturday, the National Honor Society participated in the Jolly Jolt.
What is that?
Miss Brown. It is running for the special needs people where they can go and they can run. I think, Sam, am I messing that up?
A little bit.
Special Olympics, sorry?
Yeah, it was a race held to benefit the Special Olympics, and it was such a great and positive thing that a bunch of us got out to go do. Members who couldn't attend also did leaf raking for the elderly, and so that was also something really good that you participated in.
Yes.
And I was at the Jolly Jolt, we had such a blast. Everyone was ready to go, and I was a timer actually, so we're running and running and cheering people on. It was so great to see everybody so just holiday spirited and out for such a great cause, so, thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Sam.
Yep.
That's not all that has gone on in the high school that you've been involved in in the last week.
Oh, the, we, the new We the People team for this year-
Yes.
-went to Williston to practice, having their hearings, and I think it went pretty well.
I hope it went, I went well. I mean, I certainly would, and help me if I leave names out here, but in addition to Bailey, who is a veteran, came and helped serve as a judge and timer, Tristan Koopman. Now, I'm going to draw a blank on Willow's last name.
Ross.
Willow Ross, thank you. Tom and Mike Palasek, Felicia Therian. Were there other students who were back in the role? I got the-
No, the other students weren't unable to make it.
Okay, but those, those six students came back and served to facilitate the program for the evening and did a tremendous job, and I'd like to thank my colleagues on the school committee. There are many people throughout the community who helped out, but I know that it was appreciated by, it's always, I think, appreciated by young people, to have adults take their intellectual endeavors seriously. And I appreciate Nancy, are you coming? I know that you've worked with the students in the past. Lori, I was actually in the room where you served as a judge and got to see the interaction that you had with the students, and Deb as well. I know that Deb loves you as well, so thank you to all three of you for coming and helping make that evening a success. The last thing that I would say is that I certainly want to applaud, we only got to see two of the six teams because we divided up into three spaces, but if the two units that I saw testified there, and they handled exceptionally difficult questions and some pretty tough follow-ups. Oh, right, Dr. Perron, who's here, also served as a judge, and I bet that he, along with Lori and Deb, would agree that we saw some terrific scholarship on display by the East Hampton High School students, and I think they're well on their way to defending their state title under the leadership of Kelly Brown and with the help of the veterans that we mentioned before, so thank all of you for a great evening.
And Peter, maybe I could just mention here as well, I was not there that evening because I was at the light-up, the town bash, I think it was called, the Community Arts Council, East Hampton Community Arts Council. And they awarded our schools a number of gifts for arts education, so that was really very exciting. And again, once that comes in as official check, we'll put it on our gift list, and they were just, just all so warm and welcoming to have us there and to have us, you know, be part of the arts community, and they really were some very generous gifts, so we're excited about using those gifts to help promote arts education in our schools.
Terrific evening in East Hampton last Thursday.
It was.
Thank you all. I see that we have time now set aside, so I apologize for having suggested it would come in part four. Is there any discussion that people would like to have at this point about the chair?
Well, I think we should take care of it tonight, vote for it, and that way we can start afresh in January with the new chairperson. If that's what the-
I think that's a great idea, but as you know, I-
But I, yeah, I, it does-
I'm not nominating myself, so-
Right. It does involve a new vote since you are an elected position by us.
Yeah, we need to have a nominee from the committee to serve as chair.
So, I nominate Nancy Sykes to be our new chairperson.
I second that.
Let's have any further discussion?
Should I leave the room?
I don't think so. I stay in the room each time. No, this is different than that. You don't have to leave the room. All in favor of Nancy Sykes leading the school committee in 2013?
Before we vote, I would like, I would like to say that I will be happy to, to serve in this position, but I will need guidance from all the other members of the, of the committee, and of course, from Nancy, because it will take me a little while to get up to what you know about this, Peter, since you've been doing it for a while, so just with that understanding that I'll be stumbling along at the beginning.
If your experience is anything like mine, you'll find lots of folks ready to help.
Good.
I think it's a learn-as-you-go position, so I'm sure it'll be fine.
Practice, 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 right?
Okay, if there are no other comments or discussion, we have a nomination and a second to have Nancy Sykes lead the East Hampton School Committee as the chair effective with our January 8th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll be calling on you, Peter. I've got your phone number now.
And I will continue, yes, that's right, and I will continue to be here and continue to advocate as vigorously as I possibly can on behalf of the, those students in East Hampton. Other-
We're counting on that, Peter.
Yeah. No, I understand that we're all going to stay in and, and continue with the-
Does that mean I get to sit there, Peter?
Absolutely.
Oh, no, I've grown rather fond.
You get the gavel.
Yes, well, that's a new perspective. It'll be useful. All right, is there any other matters for discussion this evening, anything that we have left off? All right, then let's move Nancy to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Peter. I have asked Mike Burley, the chair of the School Building Committee, to come here this evening, along with Principal Perron, and I know some of you on the school committee are also on the building committee, but I thought it was time, and I think we talked about this at our last meeting, about having a, an overview, a summary for the school committee and the community about what is going on in the community, in the high school building project, and so I've asked Mike to come and give us a little rundown, and then he'll be here to answer some questions, and after Mike's finished, I'm going to ask Principal Perron to come up and give his perspective as well. It's all very exciting.
It is, truly. I'm Mike Burley, the chair of the School Building Committee. As you know, most of you, I attend a meeting every Tuesday morning at 9:00 AM at the site with architect Kelo Nuneck, with the contractor Fontaine Brothers, and with the owner's project manager for us is Strategic Business Solutions. I usually do a walk-through before the meeting, it starts at nine, and I'm simply amazed every morning I go over there, the little more is done, and it's just going to be a really beautiful place when we get finished. As of right now, the first hurdle we have to meet is the January 15th, 2013. That's called a substantial completion date. What that means is that that's the point where the contractor's going to turn it over to us, city. We'll, we'll own the building after the 15th of January. Hopefully, they're going to meet that deadline. Overall, right now, they're at 85%. I know that's only four weeks away before they, they have to be finished, but that just means the building itself has to be enclosed so that the owner, which is us, can start utilizing that building. Some of the things that are more than 85% is, for instance, the windows are all in. Most of the concrete has been poured outside, all the carbing's in, sidewalks are in. The fence line was just finished this week, the brand-new fence you see all the way around. Torazo is the third done in the foyer. I looked, I was watching them this morning, and they're polishing the first third of it. It's all grid, steel grid on the floor in big giant squares that they fill with epoxy, and then they, it's very bumpy when they start, then they have to grind it down, and then they polish it after that. And it'll be sealed at some point, but right now, they're working their way across the foyer. They have to do it a third at a time because the whole foyer is closed off, you can't go through there. So, they're using two-thirds of it to get back and forth to the rest of the building, so we'll work our way across. They're in front of the auditorium and the cafeteria right now. Another thing they've done, the lockers are all in. They've only, all they have to do is be numbered. The gym floor is laid out, two-thirds of the gym floor is laid out. All the pieces are laid down, all the hardwood. It's acclimating to the, to the areas, so it doesn't swell and crack and things, so it's, it's a process. It'll take another two weeks before they nail it down, so it, but it's beautiful. It's just a good thing to walk over there. I know I made a tour the other day with Massachusetts Building Authority, comes every six weeks to take a walk around and see how we're doing, and it was really wonderful to walk in the third floor in particular, where everything is pretty much finished. You walk in the, in the room door, and then the lights come on, and then when you leave the room, the lights go off. So, we've done some nice things to save energy, and that was a good thing to see. We were also up on the roof. The photovoltaic arrays, steel is up to hold the panels. There are 330 panels that are going to go on those tangents up there, so we're making really good progress here, so it's, it's really a beautiful thing to see. Once this completion is done, the next thing we need to do is called furniture fixtures and equipment and electronics will be delivered after the 15th. They'll start putting those in the spaces they belong in, in the actual rooms. On top of that, they'll do a punch list, they call a punch list, of a walk-around to see what's not been done, what needs to be corrected, what needs to be fixed, and there are big, long lists already, so they'll narrow this down with the contractor as we go through. The contractor's by no means finished on the 15th of January, it's just that we have access to the building then, so it belongs to us at that point. My intention after the 15th, and I want to talk to Nancy and Vito about this, I want to do another staff walk-around of the building so the teachers and the staff can see where the rooms are going to be, what it looks like when they're, when they're going to get there, so they know where they are, how big they are, some of the storage difficulties they may have. I talked to Vito earlier this evening, and he liked to go earlier with a few staff during the week, just to let them take a peek at their rooms, so they can get an idea of what they need to move over from this facility that we have now to the new one, because you really don't know what's in the room that you're going to need unless you walk in there and look at it, so that'll give them a better idea, two and three, four at a time maybe, we'll arrange that to be done, but I'd like to have a scheduled visit like we did Nancy early on before, to take the teachers around, let them take a walk-through and get a feel for the building.
Yeah.
I know for a fact that the librarian's going to be thrilled. That's quite a facility up there, as is the gymnasium and the auditorium. The auditorium right now is, they're hanging what they call clouds with the lights in them and the acoustics. It's all scaffold, you can't even go in there, but that's the next thing, they're waiting for the electricians to finish so they can hang the clouds, which will all be, also help the acoustics of the building. The only other thing that I have this evening before I get some questions from you, between Nancy and, and Vito, they're now deciding what materials that the furniture fixtures and equipment didn't service, what they can use from the old high school in the new high school. That's the first thing that has to be decided, and that's along with the superintendent and the teachers. Once that list is completed and everything is tagged that they want to take with them, then we give the list to the, to Nancy and Vito, well Nancy probably mostly, what can we use out of the high school the high school doesn't, doesn't need and the rest of our schools in town. I'm sure there's materials that we can use that are sorely needed, especially when the override didn't take place, so there's lots of stuff we need, and I'm sure we can help out with some of that furniture over there. And once that list is completed, then we give the list to the mayor, and he will check with his departments and see whatever else is left that we could use in the city offices. And then the final thing, once there's anything left, and there probably will be, I have agreed to, to foot the list of people who in the city of East Hampton and the public want to buy materials or bid on materials or take some materials out of the high school that's left before they turn it over to the, to the contractor, because once that's, once the deadline comes and he puts the fence around it, we can't take anything else out of there, and that belongs to him to recycle. So, we have a long way to go here, and the first thing is for this committee probably to decide on some of that material there to go somewhere else, so it doesn't get just dumped. Recycling is good, as far as we're concerned, so, other than that-
Mike, do you want to talk about the time capsule a little bit?
Yeah, we have a time capsule. We have a committee that we had the last School Building Committee meeting, of four people who are going to decide, along with the high school, we want the students involved in this process, to put some things in the time capsule that will be buried the day we do the commissioning at the high school. It's just a round tube, six inches by 22, I thought, I think they said. It's just a cylinder about this big, has a screw cap on the top to protect the, keep the moisture out, and we'll put some things in there that 60, 70 years from now, somebody will open and say, hey, I know those people. It was my grandpa or whatever. So, that's the process that they're working on now. Deb, you're on that committee. Nancy, Vito.
Jeff and Ladonna.
Jeff and Ladonna. So, they're going to decide with, with the school and the kids to get some materials together. It'll be, it'll be a fun time. I've also made arrangements, the, the list of the plaque that's going to go on, the dedication plaque has been decided. I made some changes to it this morning. Nancy, I know that we changed yours a little bit, that you asked to have the lead part taken off, is that correct?
Oh, that's fine, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, there's some way-
Sorry, there's so many Nancys I get.
Well, that's true.
It's fine if you didn't take it off.
I should've said president? Okay, so that's pretty much done. That'll be placed the same day we do the commissioning as well on the wall. It'll be dedicated that day. We've also decided that we need to take the plaque from the old high school and feature it in the new high school for the plain reason that this is the first educational facility that we're gonna tear down in East Hampton instead of reuse. It's obvious we can't use it, but, so we thought it would be appropriate. A lot of work went into the old school, a lot of people pass through those doors, so there should be some kind of a dedication. And we're gonna take the plaque and move it over, so. That'll be a big day in May or June or July. We're not sure where, when that'll happen yet. We wanna do it so the city can come and celebrate with us. Other than that, Vito, you wanna say something else about any of this?
Does anyone on the committee have a question for Mr. Burley first?
I just have a curiosity question. Is there a time capsule under the old high school?
We wish we could find it, and somebody would know if there is one. We've asked a lot of people in town.
I'm not the first to think of that.
I've asked some older ones in town. They say no, but... And Fontaine Brothers has assured us, as they're going through and knocking it down, they'll, because they've run across it before. They have a, they showed us one in pictures of an old high school in West Springfield that was knocked down, and they found the capsule.
Well, that'll be fun.
Yeah, it would be. So far, we haven't, I can't believe they wouldn't do that, but...
What was the date of the old high school?
1961.
1961.
I was just looking at it the other day, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what the plaque says.
I bet they did do one then.
But the mayor's dad, I think.
Wasn't that long ago. Mayor Tazik's dad was on the committee.
So can you talk a little about how the demolition is going to work and when that's gonna work? And, because I know we see how close those schools are, and how is all that gonna work?
But once we get this, the kids moved over in April, the spring break in April. Once they're out of the high school and over into the new one. Yeah, good knock there. They'll take the fence around the old, the new one and put the fence around the old one. And then they'll take it right down. It's not gonna take them probably two weeks to be done. So it's, it's gonna go quick. That's what they do for a living. We're assuming they know what they're doing with that close, you're right, it's like 15 feet away, so.
Well, they spend, some of the first stretches is the hazmat-related.
Yes, they have a lot of...
Materials, so the actual kaboom. Not that there's gonna be a kaboom, but you know the...
Yeah, it won't go, they're not gonna implode it or anything, no. They have to go piece by piece because of the asbestos, which was one of the reasons why we couldn't utilize the old building. It was just too expensive to get it all out of there, and you have to take it all out. You can't just cover it up. You have to take it out. So that's the first process, and that's a long process. So it's gonna be weeks just doing that, so. But once that's done, they'll, that's part of their contract, by the way. MSBA, the building authority, says we get extra points for recycling in this project. So the contractors really interested in getting as many points as possible because that's part of his contract as well. So he'll recycle all the steel, all the concrete, all the building materials. He'll probably resell some of that to people, cycle it, and he'll make a few dollars off of it, probably. But that's all part of the process is to recycle it. So it'll be an interesting project. It really will be. Good question.
Any other questions? What, do we have Dr. Perone?
I'd like to have Dr. Perone come up and just give us his perspective of these last months.
Thank you very much, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike.
I didn't prepare anything for this evening, but I can tell you right now there's equal measure in the faculty of excitement and anxiety. And a lot of people right now are working in their full-time job, and they're also working in preparation for the move and preparing lists and documenting and identifying what we need and can bring and should bring and what we are gonna be able to surplus out and maybe share with White Brook Middle School or the elementary schools. So there's a lot of people that are working late nights right now, trying to make ready for the move. So everyone is excited. And in the back of everyone's mind, they can't wait to be in there, to be doing what they do with our students in this beautiful facility. But there is definitely that level of anxiety that's hanging over everybody's head that we wanna just, you know, finish the race and finish it strong and do the right thing for our students and our programs.
And they also worked hard on finishing up those FF and E lists, the furniture finishes and equipment, making those final decisions.
The process has been, has been arduous, getting ready for the move and for the outfitting of this facility. And we've not taken the task lightly. And we look at our students every day, and we look at the middle school and the elementary students, and we say, we want this to be the best facility for them, the best programs, the best teachers when they move into East Hampton High School, that will be. So we're not taking that responsibility lightly. And we are doing the best that we can to prepare for all those eventualities. Though it seems like they keep coming around the corner with another one. So it's daunting right now, but we are looking at the end of the race, and we're ready.
Hey, were you looking forward to moving into the new building?
Yes, I am. Very excited for it.
It really is just gorgeous. I've been over for a tour, probably not for a week now, and it's just amazing how quickly it changes.
That's a good question. She just mentioned graduation. Now, they'll be graduating in the new gym, but the old building will still be up, correct? Because they won't knock that down till summer.
Yeah, that's, that phase two? Phase two of the project. Yeah, no, we will be graduating from the new gym, in the new gym. So, and I, you know, I thought students were, I didn't know what they were gonna feel about that, but I've heard some pretty positive response that at least we'll be able to graduate in the new building, though there's some melancholy that the old building is, you know, it's gonna be off limits. And the graduation from last year was a nice success. Everybody truly enjoyed that last outdoor graduation. But it is, we're not gonna be able to do that again because this building as it is is gonna be gone.
Well, if we have a, you know, 78-degree humid evening at, you know, 8:00 p.m., folks won't be longing for the old building.
Exactly, and rain.
Or rain, yeah.
Mr. Burley noted that the lockers were in, so I'm just curious. Do you think the kids will use the lockers in this new school? Are they a little bigger?
They were designed with input. That first forum, I remember my first August in the cafeteria, we had students come in and talk about the crazy lockers that we have in this old school. We can't even use them. We can't fit our book bags. We can't fit our books in there. And so these new lockers were designed for use. I have not. The last time I was there, I was, they weren't in.
Yeah, the lockers are as tall as Vito, and there are two, one above the other. The front, the door is this wide. And it's probably, probably three foot anyway, and deep. They go way into the, so they're built just for these students. They're coming through now with their backpacks and things like that, the big ones that they carry all the time that hurts their back and stuff. So there's lots of room in there.
So I'll wager right now, my grand salary as a member of the school committee, that within a decade, five students will be able to use every one of those lockers because the book bags are gonna go away. We're gonna be all on electronic pads.
Well, that's probably true.
In the future, we're gonna come with really good and creative uses for all those spaces. I'm sure they will be well-used, but I think in the long run, that the students can look forward to backs not being so sore and things not being quite so cramped.
I think every student has the exact same response whenever I've asked, why don't you just put it in your locker? Are you serious? Have you seen the lockers? Third joke. It's the same three statements every time I've heard someone talk about the lockers.
Well, that would be a big test, as Nancy full well knows, to you get. We have to take care of this school, too. I mean, it's brand-new, and, you know, the people in East Hampton pay taxes for this, so we have to pay attention here. Not to say we didn't take care of the old one, because we do take care of our schools in East Hampton. Everybody knows that, so. But this should be easier to take care of. It really should.
Absolutely.
Other questions?
Thank you, both of you, for coming and giving us the update. There is one other thing that wasn't mentioned tonight, no, you can sit down, that we also are working on is developing a training schedule for our teachers because we have to have everybody trained in all the new technology that's in the classrooms and all the different spaces. So that's going to be an intensive project, trying to determine how we're going to get everyone trained and everything they need to be trained in between now and April vacation when our students come back. We're working hard with the project managers to develop a schedule and are confident that we'll have it in place.
It's gonna work brilliantly.
Yes, absolutely.
Because there's no alternative.
That's right.
Okay, we have an update from the MSBA on another prospect, correct Nancy?
Yes, I just wanted to update the committee on the fact that, as I think you remember, last year, we submitted a statement of interest to have White Brook renovated. And we were hoping that MSBA would pull our project into the pipeline so that, you know, we could begin to work on that. And the mayor felt pretty confident that if they did, we would be able to manage the renovations, our part of the expense of the renovations, without having to go back to the community for more money. The letter, as you can see, said that they reviewed 280 statements of interest. And unfortunately, they did not choose ours as one because they felt that there were many others that had more serious need than our White Brook project. However, we are invited, if we'd like to be considered for future collaboration with MSBA, to submit or file another statement of interest for, starting in January. They will open the site for statements of interest starting in January. So I did also want the school committee to discuss this a little bit tonight. Not that we have to make decisions at this point, but whether you are interested in having me submit another statement of interest for renovations at White Brook, or exactly what your pleasure is in terms of the statements of interest.
I have a question. Does it hurt anything to submit one every year until we, like, choose?
No, it doesn't. No, you can submit every single year.
I don't know what's involved in submitting a project.
It, you know, last time we were able to just recertify. The submission itself is a lengthy procedure, but the last time we were able to recertify, I don't know whether I would have to go out and collect a lot of new data. But, you know, it's doable. You know, we can do it. We've done it before. And I think we have, I guess I didn't have the date here. Starts in January. We have a couple of months to do that, so. And if it is the White Brook project that you'd like me to submit again, most of that is done. It would probably just be revising parts of it to update it for our current situation status.
Really, in updating the data, basic data has not changed.
That's right.
I mean, the school, the need is still there.
That's right.
Nothing magic has happened.
That's right, yes.
Since the last.
Exactly.
I think it sounds like from the, my question was similar to Ladonna's. Do they just get so used to seeing us come across the desk that we're just dismissed? Or it, there isn't really any harm?
No, not at all.
Reapply.
Not at all. In fact, when John McCarthy, the executive director, was out here visiting, I think it was last spring, you know, we talked with him again, and the mayor talked with him about our project, and they were going to take a look at it. You know, we keep, and the mayor's been very good about continuing to talk to representatives at the MSBA about our projects to try to check on where they are. So I don't think it hurts us in any way. And there's no way that they'll consider us unless we have a statement of interest submitted to the MSBA. So it behooves us to do that if you're interested in having it considered.
Makes sense.
How old is the building? 30 years?
It was built in the 70s.
It has that classic...
Open classroom...
Architectural appeal of the 1970s.
Does it, and how much longer is it under bond before you can really do any kind of drastic change to it? Because that, is that some issue?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but certainly could find the answer for you.
I was just curious.
I think another factor, are there other comments?
It just seems to make sense. It doesn't sound like it'd be that much work to resubmit. And if it's something that were accepted, it sounds like it wouldn't cost the taxpayers anything, so it seems like we would want to submit again.
And we have, we need to get that done to reopen the pool.
Yes, that's right. And that's part of the request, to do what needs to be done with the HVAC, I think it is, equipment.
Are there any reasons, any reasons why the administration would not want to resubmit?
No, no. I think they would absolutely want to resubmit.
Well, I make a motion that we as a committee do, submit the, in January, the new application for consideration.
Motion made, seconded. Yeah, I mean, I guess one thought that I have in looking at it is, as part of the strategic plan and the initiative that you have, Nancy, as we're looking forward in terms of what we're doing with the schools, in some ways, we're just talking about a better building, but it also is the opportunity, when you do that kind of renovation, to open the building up to new and different uses that might, I think, better support some of the educational initiatives that we would like to pursue in the middle school. So I think that's another consideration.
Well, and we are hoping, as you know, it was an open school plan. And so we are hoping that if we were brought into this renovation, our renovation project was accepted, that we could actually build classrooms as opposed to the temporary dividers that are separating our classrooms at this point in time.
And I think the community really, really wants that pool reopened.
Yes, as do we all, yes.
Thank you. No, I'm sorry. Right, we need to have a motion made and seconded.
Wait, wait.
Thank you.
That we request that the superintendent pursue resubmitting our application to MSBA for support for the renovation work done to White Brook Middle School. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have, we have two matters for action, right? I have a question. Does anyone know if the raffle is sold out for the Chamber of Commerce? Do not know. I know that every year since I've been on the school committee, I've always been hoping to leverage the good karma of the welfare of the kids in town. And so I will, again, invite anyone on the school committee who wants to join me. I'll buy at least one ticket and dedicate half of the proceeds, should we be so fortunate as to win, to the immediate use of the school, and the other half to be spent before the holidays are over immediately in the local community. So if anybody wants to join me, you can see me afterwards, and will. I'll head over to the Chamber of Commerce. I think it's coming up fast, though, right?
It's Thursday.
It's Thursday.
They're usually, they're usually selling tickets that night.
Okay, so. All right, thank you. We have the minutes, yes?
Motion to approve the minutes of the November 27th, 2012, school committee meeting with the stipulation to hold executive session minutes until all matters are resolved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the minutes of the November 27th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Abstain.
Right, we have one abstention.
And one, just one payroll. Move to approve the school payroll dated December 13th, 2012 in the amount of $470,773.77.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the school payroll dated the 13th of December, 2012 in the amount of $470,773.77. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any other matters that anyone like to bring before the school committee tonight?
Don't we have an obligation to statele eight?
No, no, no. Somewhere out there, somewhere out there, Brian Fink continues to be amazed at my ability to get things done faster in this chair than I ever was anywhere else.
All right, then I make a motion we adjourn for the evening. Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you. Drive safely. Thank you, drive safely.